Good evening, everyone. My name is Beth Thomas, Mayor for Glenorkie City Council. It gives me great pleasure to welcome you to our council meeting on Monday 25th of October 2021. I'd like to welcome Sharon Jacman from Glenorkie United Church to begin our meeting with prayer.
And thank you, thank you for asking me. So let's begin with a prayer. Living God, Creator of all, thank you that we can freely gather here today and for those who are here with us. Thank you for each of the councillors, each with their different gifts and talents, backgrounds, personalities and life experiences. And for the unique perspectives they bring to this council and its discussions. As we prepare for this meeting ahead, we pray for the ability to listen carefully and respectfully. To be able to understand what is said in discussions, to understand the issues and the needs of the community. We pray for good insight and the ability to hear and weigh up different opinions and options with fairness. And we pray for compassion, wisdom and good discernment in making decisions. May all that happens here be for the benefit of all in this municipality and beyond. Living God, Creator of all, we offer these prayers to you in trust and hope. Amen.
So as I say, welcome to our council meeting on Monday 25th of October 2021. I'd like to acknowledge that we meet today on the land of the Palawa people. And acknowledge and pay respect to Tasmania's Aboriginal community as the traditional owners and ongoing custodians of this land on which we meet. And pay respect to elders past, present and emerging. Tonight's council meeting is being recorded and livestreamed to the internet. And I just get confirmation that our livestream has definitely commenced back there. Yes, right. Members of the public who are in attendance for tonight's meeting may also be on the livestream and video recording. So if you don't wish to appear on the livestream, please let a staff member know. We also like to let you know about our work health and safety statement for council meetings. So Glenorkie City Council takes safety seriously. We have a duty to ensure that a safe workplace is provided for our employees. Aldermen, contractors, volunteers and members of the public whilst present at councils workplaces. The council chambers forms part of council's workplace. And it's expected that everyone who attends council meetings will behave in a polite and respectful manner. Refrain from using offensive or derogatory language or personal statements or comments. And not be aggressive, threatening or speak in a hostile manner. So moving on to item one on our agenda this evening is apologies. We have apologies this evening from Alderman Gay Richardson, Alderman Melissa Carlton and Alderman Kelly Sims. Moving on to item two, confirmation of the minutes of our open meeting. So have someone to move that the minutes of the council meeting held on 27th of September 2021 be confirmed? Move Alderman Ryan, someone to second, Alderman King. Any discussion of the item, Alderman Ryan? Any discussion of the item? Please raise your hand to indicate if you are for. That's carried unanimously. Moving on to item three, announcements by the chair. I have a couple of exciting announcements tonight to let everyone know that Glenorkie City Council last week received national recognition, beating over 100 entries from across the country to win two awards in the Economic Development Australia 2021 Awards for Excellence. The Glenorkie Economic Recovery Programme won an award in the economic recovery and resilience category. Our economic recovery programme was established in response to COVID-19 to address the on-the-ground issues faced by businesses during the crisis. While addressing deeper foundational challenges to sustain and grow the economy of our city over time. The Glenorkie Economic Recovery Programme includes immediate direct economic investments made to facilitate recovery in highly impacted industry sectors such as retail, arts, recreation and hospitality. Examples of initiatives include Activity City and KOMO, the Corridor of Modern Art. The programme also includes strategic investment in projects that aims to build economic resilience over longer term. Such as the Greater Glenorkie Plan and the Marine and Innovation Master Plan, which we have as an agenda item to consider this evening. Working with key stakeholders, these projects will maximise the efficiency, sustainability and success of these important economic precincts in the area. The other award we won was the Economic Development Diversity and Inclusion category. And we won that award for our Showcase Moona Creative Hub. This initiative enabled local businesses, innovators and creatives to showcase Moona with their own activities and events. Council leveraged the ideas and assets of locals to see the identity of the Moona precinct come to life. The return on investment was extremely positive, both financially and in terms of the outcomes sought. Participants were as diverse as the local community, including local businesses, multicultural communities, a youth social enterprise, artists, musicians, people living with disability and not-for-profit groups. The facilitation of multiple projects in unison meant that inter-community collaboration was incentivised and enabled. Congratulations and thank you to our economic development team and everyone involved at council and in the community in these award-winning initiatives. We are so very proud to have won these awards. Demonstrating Glenorkie City Council, together with our local businesses and community organisations, is nationally leading the way in economic development, making Glenorkie a better place every day. We're also excited to announce that Frontline Electrical, who were our CBD electrical and lighting contractor on our CBD revitalisation project, entered their work on this project into the National Electrical and Communications Association's Excellence Awards for 2021. Happy to announce that they won an award for lighting design and installation. With the key elements of the award being that our CBD lighting is the first dark sky compliant suburban lighting project in Tasmania. And I think only the second in Australia. It provides a lighting system that will reduce maintenance and running costs, is a much more efficient system and a far safer lighting environment for the environment and for people. So very pleased to share that good news with everybody this evening. Item four on our agenda, pecuniary interest notifications. Do any aldermen or staff have any pecuniary interests on any items on tonight's agenda?
Mayor, I declare an interest in item 22, General Manager's Performance Management Framework and KPIs for 2021/22.
Thank you, General Manager. Moving on to item five, response to previous public questions taken on notice. So we have some questions on notice there from Mr Shane Alderton in relation to the total cost of the CBD revitalisation project. And the answers are provided in the agenda. And we have some questions taken on notice from Ms Janice Bryan in relation to the council statement of commitment on gambling. And those answers are included in the agenda as well. And from Mr Robert Holdenus-Rodham about pedestrian refuges in Austen's Ferry and the Palomino Reserve Land Upgrade. So they are included in the agenda. Item six, public question time. We have allowed 15 minutes for public question time. Do any members of the public have any questions this evening? Mr Bryan?
James Bryan Montrose, in the 2019-2020 annual report, it is stated that a $5 million loan has been accessed from the state government. Included in the list of projects that this loan will assist in providing is, I quote, "works that will support strategic investment in tourism, marine and defence and retail and hospitality proceedings in the city." Question, are these core responsibilities of a council? Does this loan of $5 million include the proposed initiatives in the Prince of Wales Bay Area and the Burrydale Peninsula? In particular, the public reserve once referred to as Cameron Park? If not, what additional loans from the state government have been negotiated? What is the total amount? What works will be completed with these loans? In the interest of transparency and accountability, what are the requirements for reporting to rate payers about these loans? What is the repayment schedule? What are the consequences if repayments cannot be made? How does the Glenorkie City Council plan to fund the repayment of the debt that these loans have created? Reduce services to rate payers or increase rates?
Thank you, Mr Bryan. Quite comprehensive number of questions there, so I'll take those on notice. Would you be able to leave a copy of those for us? Thank you. Need further questions on notice? Mr Steenburgen?
Eddie Steenburgen, I live in Roswell. I have just two questions today. I don't want to get confused. The first one is about Metro Tasmania. I've... I'll start off by saying that I am a regular and frequent user of metro bus services. And I look forward to the day when I won't have to have my own vehicle to live a full and active life in Glenorkie. So naturally, I want improvements to public services, public transport services, or probably public services as well. But public transport services in particular. Now, I looked at the economic development strategy that's currently in effect. And there is an action in there to advocate for public, improved public transport. In the progress report this year, the status that that action was commenced and delivery was to be via the Hobart City Deal. Which is worrying. So I'd like, I just had two or three questions. First is, what has council in fact done this year to advocate for improved public transport? That's question number one.
Thank you, Mr Steenburgen. I might take that one on notice if you don't mind.
Okay. The second question relates to your meeting with the Metro Tasmania CEO and Chair in September. Was that purpose of that meeting to advocate or was it some other purpose?
The purpose of that meeting, Mr Steenburgen, was for me to meet the CEO as a relatively new mayor. To establish that relationship and to hear a little bit about Metro's activities and priorities going forward. So it's really just a meet and greet rather than any sort of formal agenda, if you like.
Are you planning further meetings to advocate for Glenorkie?
I haven't got any further meetings planned in my calendar at this point in time. But most definitely, it's something, as you say, that is in our economic development plan. And certainly, public transport is an initiative that is encapsulated within our Greater Glenorkie Plan. So yes, we do need to undertake further advocacy and consultation with relevant parties in relation to that.
Okay, thank you. The final question on that topic is a bit more general, it's probably slightly provocative. Can you tell me what Glenorkie has in fact received from the Hobart City Deal? Question mark.
I might take that one on notice too.
Okay. The second question is about one of those 10 stimulus projects that Mr Bryan mentioned earlier. The Citiescape project, which was initially set to take half the $5 million loan. I noticed somewhere in my reading that it's been downscaled just a little. So I was wondering if you could give us a sort of a potted history of that project, what it initially was about and why that's changed.
I probably can't articulate that really accurately in terms of a potted history here and now. So I'll take that one on notice as well, unless you would like to answer that one.
So there are two parts to the Citiescape project. The first part involved exploring opportunities for enhancements to the public space areas within the council building itself. So work was done to consult with stakeholders and a design was arrived at. However, decision was made not to proceed with those works at this stage. So that is money that's saved out of the $10 million loan that hasn't... The $5 million loan that won't be progressing. And the second stage of that project is for a work to be done on a master plan for the council precinct, the broader council precinct itself, including the library and the health centre and this particular building. So that work has been awarded to consultants and is underway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Steenburgen. Any further questions without notice from members of the public this evening? Move on to item seven, petitions deputations. Do we have any, General Manager?
No, we don't.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight, announcements by the mayor. The recommendation that council received, the announcements about the activities of myself during the period 21st of September to 18th of October. Do I have someone to move this, please? Deputy Mayor Kings, someone to second. Deputy Mayor?
No, discussion, we have no questions about it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any discussion of the item?
I've had a couple of meetings, one with Mr Steenburgen and one with Mr Alderton regarding community engagement. Just to give us a little bit of an outline around what might involve.
Sure. So throughout the, I guess, the election campaign, I talked to quite a number of community members about community engagement and council's activities in the area and opportunities for improvement. So I committed to meeting with Mr Steenburgen and Mr Alderton. I invited them to meet with me in fact, as very interested citizens of our council. So just to have a conversation about what we do currently, what the opportunities for improvement might be, any ideas that they might want to share. So it's just really opening that dialogue. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any further discussion? The recommendation to the vote, please raise your hand to indicate if you are for. That's carried... Did you have your hand up, Alderman Hickey? Sorry. Carried unanimously. Item nine, annual customer service report. We have a recommendation that council receive and note the customer service report 2020/21. Do I have someone to move this recommendation? Move Deputy Mayor, seconded Alderman Fraser. Deputy Mayor?
I think it's all there before us, Mayor. If anyone's got points they want to bring up, I'm quite happy with the four sixteen.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any discussion of the item? Alderman Fraser?
It's worth highlighting that CSAT score, customer service score, is at 90%, which I think is a great result. Still 10% of improvement there potentially, but that's good. And the other important item in this report is progress against the customer service strategy, which was approved by council, I think earlier this year or perhaps last year. And that seems to be progressing reasonably well also. So all round, I think, a fairly positive report on how council is engaging with its customers, with its residents.
Thank you, Alderman Fraser. Any further discussion of the item? Alderman Hickey?
I'll go to Alderman Dunceby.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to pass a comment. I noticed that 5% of the interactions of council over the counter are relating to the requirement for documentation authority, JP services. And council does provide the facility downstairs and volunteers come in and man that. And I just want to acknowledge the work of those volunteers who come in and provide that service every Monday for four hours. And are often available on call, council officers put them there through. I suspect that some of the statistics we're actually seeing aren't going directly through council to see that as well. People come directly into the document signing centre and not necessarily going through customer service. So I think that interaction provided by council is possibly even higher than that. And the feedback that I've heard about it is in terms of a musical area. Our document signing centre is the most active and busy compared to all others as well. So if we had more volunteers, I suspect we could impose and get them there even more. But I think it's useful to acknowledge that really good partnership with some volunteers through the Tasmanian Society of Justice of the Coast. And that is a very worthwhile service. It's possibly not reflecting as well as it could have had some of the biggest, because of the way they'll collect the information.
Thank you, Alderman Dunceby. Alderman Hickey?
Yes, when I first read this report, 39 complaints sounds almost impossible for an organisation with so many interactions with people. And I realised that it's been distilled down on a very strict criteria. So I suggest it doesn't go anywhere near recognising the number of complaints we have. But I think it's about always trying to improve the processes we've got to capture things. I'll give an example. I had a phone call last week from a gentleman who had rung the council over two manholes outside his property, very distressed because he believed it was sewage and water coming up between the two manholes. So he rang the Glenorkie City Council, who said, "No worries, we'll send two men out there", which they did. So the two men went straight out there, looked at it, rang back to the office, the office, and said, "Look, that's a Taz water problem." So the girl got on the phone to the gentleman, said, "It's a Taz water problem, you need to ring at them and report it." He said, "Well, can't you do that?" And she said, "No". And then there was a bit of an altercation. And he was so cross at the customer service or lack thereof that he rang me. So then I rang Taz Water on his behalf, which was quite tricky, I've got to say, to try and find that number through the website. And the girl there said, "No worries, I'll send two men out, they'll be there in half an hour." In half an hour, they went out, they drained the two manholes and he rang me to say thank you. She rang me to say it had been done. And I reported it to council to say, "Really, it would have been easier if the two men looking at the manholes from us had just done that." So that's the kind of reporting we do need to capture. Around about way, it's easier to have made one phone call than all of this interaction and a bad result.
Thank you, Alderman Hickey. Any further discussion of the item? I'd just like to add, I guess, a couple of more of the stats that come out of the report. The council served 64,466 customers in 2020/21. Obviously not necessarily individual customers, we only have 47,000 people within our municipality roughly. So obviously some of them visit us more than once in each year, which is great. We had 14,397 customer service requests in 2020/21. And there's been a 24% increase in service requests over the last three years. So that's quite a significant impost on our resources, I guess. We are meeting our, generally meeting our customer, our service levels in responding to 98% of inquiries within 10 days. But as Alderman Hickey said, there's always room for improvement and something we're looking to improve on is callback requests. So I'm pleased to see that we're looking at areas for improvement whilst at the same time acknowledging the high volume of requests we get and the generally good performance for those requests. Also note the significant increase in development applications that we've had. That poses a significant, you know, resource constraints on our development, plumbing and building and development planning team. We have had 746 development applications in 2021. 99.75% of these are assessed within the statutory timeframes. This is a significant increase from 484 in 2019/2020. And the three years prior to that, around 330. So it just goes to show the significant increase in development which is happening in our city, which is very positive. Any further discussion of the item? Go back to the mover, Deputy Mayor King.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, the customer service area is the coalface of this organisation in most cases. You know, people that see everything firsthand and I'm grateful for them and for what they do. And again, happy to recommend this report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll put the motion to the vote. Please raise your hand to indicate if you are for. It's carried unanimously. Moving on to item 10, Marine and Innovation Master Plan. We have a recommendation that council endorsed the Marine and Innovation Master Plan to strengthen and protect the Prince of Wales Bay's precinct's economic viability. So do I have someone to move this recommendation? Deputy Mayor, someone to second. Alderman Fraser, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Look, this is a fairly in-depth report we've got here in the master plan. I know we've had discussions around it, regular works kind of took, thank the staff for the work they've done. Again, all the master plans are living documents in my mind and we'll continue to grow them and improve them and look at ways to do better. And I think it's a good start. A very good ground to start.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any further discussion of the item? Alderman Ball?
Just under the, thank you, Mayor, just under the heading of the financial, just to make it a little bit confusing. It says the development of the Marine and Innovation Master Plan is one of 10 projects funded as part of the Economic Recovery Plan using a 3.5 million no interest free loan. That is for the total 10 products, not just that.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Thank you, Alderman Ball. Further discussion of the item? Alderman Fraser?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so this is, I mean, this has already been across our table as Alderman. And it's gone back out to the community for some feedback, particularly in that local Goodwood area. You can see the effort that, you know, the effort... You can see the effort that, you know, the effort that's gone into community engagement. I think this is a good example of just how difficult it is to get feedback from the community, for whatever reason that might be. But in this case, even the responses we did get, they were mostly positive. I think there was only one, two negative sentiments from the local community. And obviously, when you have an industrial, commercial area rubbing up against a residential area, there's always going to be a little bit of tension and friction because they have, you know, different goals and aspirations. But this is obviously, in general, an area that has huge potential. We've put this document together and now with perhaps a federal election coming up, there's a wonderful opportunity for the council potentially to seek some federal funding for further investment in the area, which will stimulate economic activity and hopefully create some more jobs in the area as well. So it's an exciting, exciting master plan for Glenorki's future.
Thank you Alderman Fraser, Alderman Hickey.
Well, as I've been known to be rather critical of our community engagement, this is contrary to that because I actually think this is a very proactive consultation. And a lot of community engagement is really about what's in this for me. And so the people who have legitimate interest in this goal are the ones that have contributed responses. I don't think it's necessary anything you'd get on your GCSE mail, not GCSE mail, what's that? Let's talk, let's talk, because it's just not well known enough. And out here, the access to computers, let alone digital literacy, let alone any literacy, is very difficult. So that's got a long way to go before that is a tool that's going to really be useful. I'm glad we started the journey, but I do think it's nothing to rely on at all at the moment. Whereas this has, this whole plan has been very proactively targeting the people who need to have some say in it. So I think that's really, really good. And also, if you look at the way that Clarence has developed its Cambridge light industrial area, that is such an outstanding example that could be followed by a city like Glenorki where you have your industrial like-minded groups situated together rather than plotted right in the heart of your city amongst retail and amongst residential. So that is actually kind of messy. So if we can steer development like that, I think it's a much better outcome. And the only thing I am going to complain about, because you'd be very disappointed if I didn't, is page nineteen. When we talk about a community plan reference, it says, building image and pride. Our streets are clean and attractive, the entrances to our city are striking. Welcome people to the city of arts, opportunity and partnerships, our commercial hubs are vibrant. I do believe Mahuna is showing us the way there, but I hardly think our streets are clean and nor do I find our entrances striking, so that is something for us to aim for.
Thank you Alderman Hickey. Any further discussion of the article? I would just like to add to my support for this master plan as well. Quite significant effort has gone into this and there's been really strong engagement from businesses in particular around that Prince of Wales Bay area. And I, you know, we've got over fifty businesses in that area that contribute a significant amount to our economy and to broader transport, transport equipment manufacturing sector in Tasmania. So as you read in the master plan, sixty-three percent of value in this sector comes from Glenorki, which is quite significant. Fifty-seven million dollars injection into the economy and sixty percent of transport equipment manufacturing jobs are in our municipality of Glenorki. So it's significant, the area is significantly contributed to our, not only our Glenorki economy and jobs, but broader Tasmania as well. It's really important because of that, that we have a coordinated plan to grow the economy and the market share of that area, to remain competitive and to ensure the long-term sustainability of the businesses in that area. And that's exactly what this master plan sets out to achieve. It's got really clear objectives and actions and it clearly outlines where council is the deliverer, the partner or the advocate for those initiatives. So really clear framework to guide us and those organisations within the precinct to the future. And I think those relationships that have been established through the development of this master plan is something that will continue to serve the only council and our community, but the other businesses within that precinct going forward as well. So I'm really pleased to see this come over our desk for approval and endorsement. And as Alderman Fraser said, means we can, we can get on with, you know, using it as a framework to advocate for funding to support the growth and sustainability of that area. I agree Alderman Hickey, that cleanliness and image and pride of our streets is a high priority. And I'm sure that's really important to the businesses and people who live around the Prince of Wales Bay precinct area as well. Something we always will continue to strive towards and need the cooperation of our community in doing so, in achieving that one. Go back to the mover, Deputy Mayor King.
Thank you, I just thank my fellow Alderman for their input and move that we endorse the master plan.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, put the recommendation to the vote, please raise your hand to indicate if you are for. That's carried unanimously. Moving on to item eleven, digitisation of council records. And we have a recommendation that council approved the increase to the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two capital budget of three hundred and fifty, oh, thousand dollars, there's a zero missing there. I'll just clarify that, Deputy General Manager.
Yes, three hundred and fifty thousand.
To undertake the digitisation of council records. So do you have someone to move with that amendment? That it is three hundred and fifty thousand, Alderman Ball, thank you Alderman Ball. Seconded Alderman Dunsey, Alderman Ball.
Yes, I'd like to support this, I think it's certainly worthwhile because we've seen over the past history with various councils where original old documents have been lost. And with these now digitised, we're aware of the problems that that could cause when we were shut down for Covid. If it was digit, if they were digitised, it's so much easier to get access. I just have one question in regards to the ongoing costs. If that could be explained, is, are there ongoing costs on this?
Sure, thank you Alderman Ball. General Manager.
Director. Yeah, I can hear, yeah.
Our Chief Financial Officer, Tina.
Thank you Mayor, yeah, through you there, ongoing costs in relation to this one. Normally in capital works, we have an ongoing depreciation operating expense for that. Because this one is an intangible asset, there's an impairment assessment that's done each year. So it's not actually depreciated each year. So the actual ongoing operating costs for this one, until it reaches the end of life, are basically zero.
Thank you.
Thank you Alderman Ball, Alderman Dunsey.
I've got a question of the officer through you there.
Sure.
With the completion of this particular work, would there actually be a cost saving where documents are currently stored? Would there be no requirement for that? So would that actually create a cost saving for council?
Yes, that's correct, Alderman Dunsey. So we're currently paying for storage of hard copy files. I think it's about eighteen thousand dollars a year that we're paying for that storage. So that will be a saving for us in that operational budget. The other cost that this will help alleviate is staff accommodation. So currently we have paper files filling up of the space. We're hoping to be able to, once those digitised move staff into those spaces, thereby reducing the amount of staff we need to have in other leased accommodation.
I'd imagine there'd be saving of the time of the staff as well in terms of being able to access the files too. So whilst that won't be a measure that you'll see on papers, certainly a measure that you use a bit too.
Yeah, and part of it too is when, when clients come to us and they ask for their property files from nineteen ninety, whatever, we have to then go and get them out of storage and bring them back to the office and then provide them. This will be a much quicker process.
Okay. Thank you Alderman Dunsey, anything further? Any further discussion of the article, Alderman Hickey?
I think it's imperative that we get on to this as soon as possible. This technology's been around for some time and obviously this council has struggled budget-wise or resource-wise to get on to it. But whatever that's behind us, and I'm just really glad you're getting on with it because we cannot keep doing things inefficiently, so this is a good move forward.
Thank you Alderman Hickey, any further discussion? I'll put the recommendation to the vote, please raise your hand to indicate if you are for.
Didn't want me to say anything else.
Oh, sorry, would you like to close the mic? Thank you for reminding me, my bad. That's carried unanimously, noting that Alderman Fraser has left the room.
One to you.
One to me.
Right, one to you, yeah. Item twelve, quarterly report, quarter one twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. We have a recommendation that Alderman receive a note, council's quarterly report and quarterly annual plan progress report for the quarter ending thirty of September twenty twenty-one. Do you have someone to move this recommendation, please? What a chance, evening, Alderman, Deputy Mayor King, moved?
Yep.
Thank you, someone to second?
Six to six seriously.
Alderman Ball, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you Mayor, look, time for discussion, it's. I think we'll just, yeah, just time for discussion.
Any discussion of the article where, oh, sorry, Alderman Ball?
Yes, just note there under the quarterly report, it says on page thirty-eight at the top there, quarterly report, performance over the fourth quarter, I think that should be the first quarter.
Clarify that, General Manager?
That's correct.
Yep. Thank you Alderman Ball.
Your, thanks.
Alderman Hickey.
Mayor, I'd like to query the non-operating capital grant revenue. It says capital grants revenue is two point two five two million against an annual budget of four point eight seven eight million. The year-to-date figure is predominantly two point zero eight five million in unspent grants funds being carried forward from last financial year. So am I reading that right, that we haven't got any grants for this year?
Through you Mayor, year-to-date for this current financial year, we receive very minimal additional capital grants. They tend to flow predominantly towards the end of the financial year, certainly towards the end of the calendar year. In an operational grant perspective, the bulk of the grant money we receive operationally that's not carried over from last year relates to the government subsidies for childcare. And we certainly have received a significant amount of those in the first three months of the year.
So may I ask a supplementary question?
Sure.
So do we, as a council, actively pursue grant money? Or do we rely on politicians sort of, or our community groups seeking it?
Through you Mayor, it's both. We will get grant opportunities that are presented to us as an organisation, but we also very much do actively look for grant opportunities, particularly where they can support existing initiatives or existing planned expenditure and can become a funding source for those. We certainly look for those opportunities.
So follow-up question, do we have a budget that we seek grants? Like I remember some councils used to have something like four percent of their income.
Through you Mayor, no, we don't have a separate budget for that. I'm aware of some councils that do, but no, we don't currently.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Alderman Hickey, anything further?
No, thanks.
Any further discussion of the article? I've raised a few benefit, we're on the quarterly report and annual plan progress report. Yes, sure.
The Capital Works Programme, twenty-five million, record Capital Works Programme for this year. I think we're about three or four million dollars in from memory. I'm just wondering at what point the council will see fit to revise its Capital Works budget so it reflects reality. Because obviously budgets should as far as possible reflect reality.
Absolutely, through you Mayor. We undertake, as you'll be well aware, a mid-year budget review that normally comes to council in January. So that's normally our first opportunity when we come back to council seeking any changes to that. If there are any significant changes in the interim, they would of course come back to council for endorsement of a change to that Capital Works budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'd just like to point to some of the strategic and operational highlights then that we've achieved in the first quarter of this financial year. Really importantly for our community, we have achieved the completion of our CBD revitalisation project and that I mentioned earlier, the award that the electrical contractor won for the lighting and the innovation that we have in the lighting along that main road strip and extending to our council court is something that we should be really proud of. The streetscape is looking a lot neater and is a lot better for people with mobility issues to access. And we look forward to continuing to support the businesses and encourage the businesses along that strip to make good use of that, of that CBD area. So I'd like to acknowledge that was a significant project for council over that, over the last three-year period and acknowledge the patience of the community during that time to make our CBD a better streetscape and road. I'd like to also point to the achievements that we've had with our Fogo service. So I think, I think it was around eight thousand tonnes of waste has been diverted from our landfill since we started our Fogo service in February last year, last year, twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty.
Yeah, it was like February ago. So that's, we're really grateful to our community for the support of using that Fogo service. It was somewhat of a, you know, difficult decision for council to make at the time, but clearly is something that has been embraced by our community and something that we should be proud of. We've made some headway into some of our complex and significant expense, significantly expensive sport and recreation projects that we've got federal government funding for and we're in quite close conversations with the sporting clubs who are affected by or who will benefit from those projects. So we've certainly made some headway in those projects over the first quarter. So we've got quite a few things in there that we should be reflecting on and communicating to our community around the things that we're achieving and working to achieve for them in the first quarter of the year and will continue to work on going forward. So I commend the quarterly annual plan progress report and quarterly report to my fellow Alderman and the community. No further discussion, I'll go back to the mover Deputy Mayor King.
Thank you, just endorse all the comments that have been made and move on.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, put the recommendation to the vote, please raise your hand to indicate if you are for. Carried unanimously. Item thirteen, delegation for a non-meeted lighting electricity supply contract. A recommendation that council approve a delegation to the General Manager to enter into and sign a contract for the supply of electricity for council's unmeated street lighting arising from the twenty twenty-one Legat tender process. Do you have someone to move this recommendation? Alderman Dunsey, someone to second? Or Deputy Mayor, Alderman Dunsey?
No, thank you, I believe the report is fairly self-explanatory and I'm happy to support and open up for discussion.
Thank you Alderman Dunsey, Alderman King.
Just a question through you Mayor, probably to the General Manager, I'm trying not to be cynical about this, but LGS organised this group purchase. Are they getting a fee out of it?
Through you Mayor, I'm not sure of the details of that, but I suspect that they do get a fee out of it. But what I will say is that the importance of this, this delegation is that Alderman may recall last time, we had a situation where the delegation wasn't in place for this process. Council, we believe it's the best value, value for money for the community is to basically negotiate in bulk with the rest of the sector in relation to electricity supply contracts for our street lighting. And the best way to do that is through this Legat process. And last time we didn't have the delegation in place. And so the problem we have is we get to a point where the contractors working for Legat get a spot price effectively that's only there for a very limited window of time. And unless we, unless we action that really quickly, then we miss out on the benefits of negotiating at scale as a sector with providers. So that's the importance of it, we didn't have that in place last year and I had to make a decision on the spur of the moment, I think it was last year or last time this came around, and then reported to council after the fact. And this year we're ahead of the game and we're making sure we're putting these arrangements in place so we can take advantage of that competitive process.
Excellent, just one other question if I may, we're on it. I know it's probably a few years now since Andrew Woogie got us funding to change the lights over from candescence to LEDs. Have we noticed, and maybe Tina would know this, have we noticed much of a difference in our cost of street lighting compared to what it used to be? And then did we ever, I'm sorry. And then did we ever, I'm sorry, and add on this, I know we were paying a fee for the brackets on the light poles and I questioned that at the time. And I don't know if we're still paying that fee, same fee every year for a bracket that doesn't deteriorate.
Through you, Mayor, I don't know the answer to that. I'm just looking to see whether the directors or the CFO have any insights, directors here.
You jump down.
Thank you, Director Rialli.
So this, through you, Mayor, through the cost saving, I can recall when we first actually installed the LED streetlights. There was a significant saving, we're down from about 800,000 down to about 600,000 per year. And that wasn't the whole more area completed at the time. So there was a, there is a significant saving in installing LED lights. The brackets, the lightheads and the brackets were actually owned by TAS Networks and they were depreciating those. So, and that depreciation was actually charged back to council as part of the overall fee that we had to pay to TAS Networks to maintain and guard the assets. So whilst we've changed all the lightheads, there's still a depreciation fee on the brackets and a service charge for them to maintain.
I know I questioned that depreciation some years ago and pretty good return on those brackets, the depreciation, surely. It'd be worth asking the question again, aren't they fully depreciated yet or?
Through you, Mayor, we could ask the question, but they would have a longer life than the lighthead themselves. And it might be better if, a significant amount for a piece of steel, that was all. But nevertheless, I believe that's in your good hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Any further discussion of the item? Alderman Bull?
Just a quick question if I may, Mayor, on the top page 43, or just below 42, it's got there for quarter two, 2021, which is $47 per megawatt hour. Is it just pro rata, just for this month?
General Manager?
2021, so that's the quarter two of the 2021 financial year rather than this 2122.
Oh, right.
So that'd be, that's basically the December quarter of 2020, 2020.
September to December, so where's that 47 come from, that figure? Is it?
Where does it come from?
Well, we're only 25 days into the quarter.
No, that's last year.
It's December, December quarter in 2020.
One?
2020.
The last one I'm talking about, is that right?
Yes, correct. So that's, so the convention is that the financial year 2020-2021 is referred to as the 2021 financial year. So that is the second quarter, that's the September to December quarter in 2020, the first half of 2021 financial year.
So there's no figures in that table for this current calendar year?
Correct. That's right.
Makes sense? So although it says 2021, it's actually reflective of the 2020-2021 financial year? So there's no quarter three?
It says quarter ending, the way I read that, quarter ending, I would expect that to be December 31, 25th of the year.
I think, with all due respect to accounts, I think it's accounting speak. So, so it's the 20, it's referring to the 22. I know what you're saying, it appears to be quarter two in the 2021 calendar year, but I think they're referring to 2021 in the, in the 20, 2020-2021 financial year, which was December last year.
So there's, there's no more current figures then?
The financial year ended 30th of June 21, correct?
Correct. Oh, you're saying, are there any more recent figures, is that the question?
No, I was just wondering how we had a figure there, because I'm thinking that's this current to December this year.
You know, I think it's.
So therefore the 20 figures aren't 20, 2000.
I think it's misleading, I think those are financial years, those are referring to financial years, not calendar years.
Yeah, I'm kind of financial as well.
Are you?
As an electrician, I read this is the spot price that they're suggesting, projecting for that period.
Is that a projection?
Projection, that's my view, it's projection of what it would be for that quarter, the figure that they quoted for that quarter in advance, that's all it is.
Reflective move, it's a complete projection.
Is that correct? Is it a projection?
No, I don't think it is.
I don't think so.
It's a spot price. Average.
Is it material to the?
No, it's not. I mean, I'm right or wrong, so I'm just trying to seek clarification.
So if we can certainly clarify that, can't we, General Manager, post meeting, as long as it's not material to the consideration of the recommendation?
Through you, Mayor, I think the point of the table is really to demonstrate that there's a downward trend in the cost per megawatt hour over time. There's a benefit in locking in a more lesser price.
Through, I have no concern with that, since the other quarter ending column was my concern. Thank you. Not projected to be quoted.
Thank you, Alderman Bull. Any further discussion of the item? I'll go back to the mover, Alderman Dunsby.
I think so, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunsby. I'll put the recommendation to the vote, please raise your hand to indicate if you are for, that's carried unanimously. Moving on to item 14, updated council policy. We have a recommendation that council adopt the updated legal services policy in the form of attachment two. Do I have someone to move this recommendation? Move to Alderman Ryan, someone to second? Alderman Fraser, Alderman Ryan?
Yes, I'd just briefly say the policy, the legal services policy was due for review in December. But we, it came up in a discussion during the audit panel meeting recently. And so the review was kind of just brought forward. The changes are fairly minor. The modulative and ethical model is standard across Australia in government and government agencies. And it's now reviewable four years, every four years instead of two.
Thank you, Alderman Ryan. Any further discussion of the item? Nothing further, Alderman Ryan?
No.
Recommendation to the vote, please raise your hand to indicate if you are for, it's carried unanimously. Item 15, Purcellment Contracts Monthly Report. We have a recommendation that council receive a note that Purcellment Contracts Monthly Report is issued from 15th of September to 13th of October 2021. Do I have someone to move this recommendation? Alderman Fraser, someone to second? Alderman Dunsby, Alderman Fraser?
My reading was that there was nothing to report, is that correct? We had a report on nothing to report, that's, I guess, a good thing?
Yes, partly expenditure on legal services.
That's right, oh, there was legal, okay.
Yes, which we're required to report according to our ministerial directions, that's right. General Manager?
That's correct.
Yep, and Purcellment Contracts, even if there is nothing to report, yes, you're correct. Alderman Fraser? Any further discussion of the item? I'll put the recommendation to the vote, please raise your hand to indicate if you are for, carried unanimously. Item 16, notices of motion, questions on notice without notice. We had some answers to some questions taken on notice from Alderman Sims that she tabled despite being an apology at the last meeting. And there are answers to those provided in the agenda. Any further notices of motions, questions without notice? Alderman Fraser?
I did have a beautifully crafted question without notice and I've lost all my notes, but I'll attempt to do it from memory. And I've got a feeling that I asked this very same question at the same time last year, in fact. And it's a nice segue from Alderman Hickey's point about the tidiness of a city. I can't help but notice that councillors, again, finding it difficult to keep up the lawn mowing. I think that residents, ratepayers particularly, expect, you know, the tidiness of a city is very much about how it looks visually. And long overgrown grass really makes the place look tardy, in my opinion, I think in the opinion of a lot of other people. So my question is really, how is, how are the areas that are mowed within the city prioritised? Because it's clear that some places are mowed on a regular basis, others seem to never get mowed. And is there any way, you know, are all the areas that need mowing in the city carefully mapped? Are they on a roster? Are they mowed, you know, on a regular basis? How do we know when they need to be mowed? And, you know, whether there is anything that can be done to keep up with the lawn mowing a little better than we currently are? That's a bit of a long-winded question, so. Get the idea.
I'll hand to Director Rialli to answer that question.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess this time of year, the growth does actually get quite rapid, especially when we have some rain, good soaking rain, and then the sun comes out, so the grass does grow rapidly. We do have our lawn mowing on schedules, certain areas of the city are on schedules, rated from what's just a reserve to playgrounds or highly-used reserves to just other general areas that, you know, like, not such nature strips, but areas that are like nature strips in city streets. But we are always lagging behind when we have the growth season. We are just entering into a contract with a contractor to do vegetation control in areas, reserves, parklands, creaking magnets, those sort of areas where we can use mechanical vegetation control as well as spray. And we just have all our teams out working as well. We do have some additional labour hire contractors on at the moment, trying to keep up with it. And I think it's just something that we experience every year that we run behind for a little while, until the growth slows down, then we catch back up and then the city's tidy again. Yeah. Yeah, I guess with our current resource levels, we'll always have a bit of a lag behind.
Sure. Another question if I may, Mayor, so, I mean, it's, I'm only using my own street as an example, but we have a median strip that is that high already and it really only gets mowed when I ring up and complain about it. It's not a, it's not a, it's not an area that's up to residents to mow, it's in the middle of the street, so it really is council property. And then there's also easements in that general area that, again, are, you know, that high already. I, they don't appear to be on any sort of regular schedule, they seem to only get mowed when someone complains about it. I mean, does the council have a, you know, do, how accurate is the mapping of the areas that needs to be mowed? You know, are there some that slip through the cracks?
Through you, Mayor, that's possible, but they generally are all mapped out on schedules. But I'll certainly take that on notice and see what's going on in your area, to see why.
Yeah, it's just a small sample, but I imagine it's like that in other places as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rialli. Any further questions without notice? Alderman Hickey?
On the same theme, or on the same theme about tidiness and cleanliness of the city, I think it is a downfall, particularly in the major shopping route. There's lots of cigarette butts, lots of spit and vomit and goodness knows what else. I'm just wondering if a report could be offered to look at the cost-benefit analysis of one of those little cleaning vacuum cleaner machines that could operate in the main street. A, it really gives a good vibe when you see one of those little machines cleaning up a city. And secondly, I think it would cut down on man-hours and it'd just be healthy all round. And if it is a cost-benefit, is there some way of approaching the government for funding? I think they're about $50,000 for the machinery, but obviously it'd have running costs. And they are also well sign-written, so it's a really good PR exercise that we do care about the city, particularly all those shop fronts.
Thank you, Alderman Hickey. Director Rialli and I had a conversation about those little vacuum machines not long ago, didn't we, when we were out walking around the CBD? General Manager, would you perhaps like to let Alderman Hickey and other Alderman know about the work that's being done in and around EOT on the CBD cleanliness?
Yes, so we're doing, the concerns around cigarette butts and landscaping, those sorts of issues, we are addressing as well as the public place behaviour issues. So we've put together an action plan to look at a range of, a range of things around that. Interestingly, I noted, as I was leaving my office for this meeting, that there were police doing a patrol through the council forecourt. So certainly the police patrols have been picking up, and that's separate to the, to the other issue. But, yes, certainly we have put together an action plan around this. And I know that the issue of cigarette butts is a problematic issue and I've certainly experienced that on Cleanup Australia Day, picking up all the butts at the front of Northgate from the landscaping beds. It is something that our act or crews do work on day in, day out, but it's hard to keep pace with the litterers. We are, I believe we're, we're close to, if we haven't already, putting butt bins in place in designated areas. Getting nods, but there might be some more detail forthcoming from director, one of the directors about that. But we're certainly on, we're on to those concerns through you, Mayor, that have been installed.
Okay. Just got to encourage people to use them.
Yeah, I think.
And Director Rialli, you did say that we did have one of those vacuum cleaner machines at some point, would you like to just elaborate on that perhaps?
Yes, through you, Mayor, we used to have one of those footpath sweepers, the smaller street sweepers, more specifically designed for footpaths. But we, it wasn't as efficient as another, I guess, piece of machinery that, when that machine was, I guess, you know, reached the end of its life, an assessment was made actually to whether to get another one or not, or to look at some other types of options. So we do have a trailer-mounted vacuum unit that does go along the street and can pick up litter. It's a bit more manually operated, but it's a bit more efficient because it'll pick up leaf litter and everything in car parks and it'll actually clean out a bit of litter out of store water pits and things like that as well. So that's what we've actually got at the moment. I can check on the schedule of that, on how often that's taken into the CBD and used on the footpath and garden bed areas. But the street sweeper actually does do a main road run every second day through main road, Munna, Ginnorke and Clamod. So it does do, but that's curving gutter, not actual footpaths.
Yes, so perhaps in your report, you could look at the footpaths, because that's my main concern. And also, I mean, we have a situation where you go into Northgate and there's cleaners everywhere. You come right out the front of Northgate and it's just revolting.
Through you, Mayor, the smaller street sweeper, or the footpath sweeper, had trouble getting around pedestrians, street signs. And I think it wasn't very ergonomically set up for operators, so.
Is it an old one or?
No, it was, I think we got it in about 2011 or 2013, something like that. But it's, once it had used its time, it was actually sold off and we didn't actually get a replacement one. But the trailer-mounted vacuum unit is what it was replaced with.
Is that signed? I've never seen that.
Uh, no, no.
I've put to you too that every second day, probably not enough.
So perhaps could your quest, is your question, Alderman Hickey, that we get some more information on this trailer-mounted?
And the latest street sweeper?
Yep.
And compared to the costs of operating both?
So that's fair. No question?
Through you, Mayor, it would actually be an operational cost to increase the frequency or introduce another item. But we can certainly work out what that cost would be and present it to council in the report.
Do we need a notice on motion for that, General Manager, or is that be taken as a question?
Well, we're happy to take that as a question. Well, we're happy to take that as a question in the first instance, bring the information back, and then make a prompter motion from council.
Sure. Thank you. Alderman, Deputy Mayor King.
Just quickly on that, we, the litter's the problem, and the litterers are the problem. So do we have the ability to find, I think we have the ability, don't we, to find people for littering?
Through you, Mayor. I believe we do have authorised offices at the council. Director Community and Customer Services wanted to add any further information, or whether it's our, your.
If I may, General Manager, you correct. I believe it's through our EHS at this time.
Environmental Health Officers.
We do have a really, it's where we put our resources. So we can certainly address that in the response as well. And we've been talking a lot about that in terms of smoking and smoking vans and butt bins, and how much of our staff that we have in that, in that area that also do urbanisations and environmental assistance for businesses, how much of their time would be willing to allocate to doing that sort of littering, and what's going to make the behaviour change as well? Is it getting fined for throwing a cigarette powder, or is there other things?
No, is it about putting an article in the Gazette or something like that, or on our website, saying, are you aware you can be fined for littering? We will fine you, et cetera. We just can't keep allowing people to litter. It's not acceptable. You know, don't do it at home, you can do it, maybe do it at home.
Another question without notice, Alderman Fraser.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So something else that occurred to me, reading through the agenda, was in the item on the digitisation of records. One of the part of the rationale for digitising records is creating space, particularly in the Terry Street building, which I believe the council leases, I don't know who, perhaps of the state government?
Salvation Army.
Salvation Army. And that's, it got me thinking, you know, obviously Covid has happened, and a lot of people have got very used to working from home. Has the council done any analysis on, you know, what percentage of council employees could work from home and would be willing to work from home, perhaps as a way of reducing the physical footprint of the council chambers and therefore reducing costs?
Through you, Mayor. We've certainly, we've certainly observed the phenomenon. We were in a situation where we've, and I can't remember off the top of my head, the extension of, we've recently extended the lease with Salvation Army. But we have, it has been something that we've been considering for some time and looking at the practicality of bigoted to can't that many people into another building. So it's not something we've got a ready answer for now, but it's certainly something that our minds are alive to.
The part of that question about people working from home, though, I mean, is that also on the agenda? I mean, I imagine there are a lot of employees that could potentially work from home quite productively if they wanted to need it to. Has that been examined at all?
We've certainly got, we've certainly got quite a number of staff working at home now, many more than we had prior to Covid. What Covid has forced us to do is to put the technology in place, you know, Microsoft Teams, to enable that remote operation. But in terms of an overall assessment of, I'm not aware of a whole of council assessments that's been undertaken in relation to that.
Do you think it's, if I had another one, do you think it's worthwhile? I mean, is there an opportunity there, do you think?
Yes, certainly is, yeah.
Can I just ask, and follow up to that, is that something that will be considered as part of the Cityscape planning that's being undertaken or not? Not to that extent?
Jenny Richardson, our Director of Corporate, has had quite a few discussions over the last six months around how we might decant stuff from Terry Street to bring them into this building before the next lease is due for renewal. Part of that is about figuring out who's worked from home and who's able to work from home for at least part of the week, and thinking about desk sharing. So it might be that, you know, three days a week, someone uses the desk, and the other two days a week, someone else uses it. So certainly Jenny is very much on top of this idea, and we, while it's not part of the Cityscape project, it's a project that she's overseeing because of that Terry Street issue. But certainly in my team, a lot of chambers-based team, there is a lot of staff working from home at least two days a week. So there is a lot of opportunity to do that. We just need to map that out, and things like, you know, sanitising desks and all those sorts of things.
Thank you, Director. Another question without notice, Alderman King.
Just wondering how the Jobs Hub's going.
Jobs Hub's going very well, actually. We've had, I think it's almost up to two hundred participants registered with Jobs Hub. We've got five, I think we've got five jobs champions. We've got more than five jobs pledges. I think we've got five signed and another sort of six or so in the works. The feedback from job seekers has been fantastic. People are very impressed. We've got some training programmes coming up to start using some of that training as well. So it's, yeah, it's really, I've got some traction out there, particularly with people who are having trouble getting through the door because it's, you know, CV or resume or a basic skill set or a certificate, just getting their confidence up to get out there and apply for those jobs. We've had a number of placements as well, where people have been put into a sort of, almost like a work experience, but a bit of a trial for a few days, and then they've been offered a job, which is great.
So would you say we're on par, above expectation, below par?
We are pretty much. I just looked at the KPIs today. For the end of December, we've met nearly all of those KPIs for the end of December, so we're on track, definitely. The one that we don't yet have good data on is the actual number of job replacements. So we get monthly reports from STIPS, but we haven't yet got the latest one to let us know if we're on track with placements. But you expect there to be a bit of a ramp up period as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Fox. Any further questions without notice? Alderman Ball.
I just had to go to the previous one that I was trying to talk to, just wipe out the ban, wipe out the ban on smoking altogether. Let's call it the ball area. That solves the problem.
Thank you, Alderman Ball. Director Ronaldson, would you like to answer that one?
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, Alderman Ball. If we declare, my understanding through the Act is if we declare an area unable to be smoked at, non-smoking, we then need to be able to police that area. It refers back to Director Fox's comment before around putting in place that resource to be able to actually enforce the space. We haven't actually got that in place at this time. Interesting, though, watching what our colleagues have done at Clarence and Hobart. You might recall that Hobart City Council put in place a no-smoking area around the hospital, around the main general hospital. They employed at that time an enforcement officer to do exactly that, to enforce people and issue infringement notices. Don't quote me on the figures, but roughly in my mind, there were over three hundred enforcement tickets given in the first twelve months, and only a handful of those were paid. So that process, while proactive, was ultimately not successful. As you can imagine, a number of people didn't take kindly to someone enforcing that process. What Hobart have stepped back to is an engagement and an education process to try and change behaviours. And if we think about how behaviour change has happened in children's playgrounds over the last fifteen years, where previously people were able to smoke wherever they liked, a rule came in place to encourage people not to smoke around children's playgrounds, and then they became self-policing over a period of time. What we need to do, and what we're really talking about here, is getting some change in place where you're looking for people to go, all right, that's not a place I can smoke in. Over there possibly is, and as Director Rialli said before, we've got bins in place at the moment. The next step in that change of behaviour is getting people to move towards those areas. So that, I know that was a long-winded way of answering the question, but that enforcement tactic is difficult from the point of actually resourcing someone to enforce that, and if council doesn't actually enforce that, then council is liable for a fine ourselves. And then, secondly, dealing with people saying terrific, fine me, and ripping up, and not taking the enforcement seriously. So it's a, it's a complex thing to change, but we're talking about people's behaviours that we need to change in the longer term.
So probably wasn't where the enforcement would find. Yeah. My thoughts were that if you put up no smoking, at least everyone will smoke there because they're allowed to at the moment, but maybe the majority would say, I'm not allowed to smoke here. So a reduction would be beneficial, but, yeah, no, I appreciate your point. Thanks, yeah.
Thank you, Director. Another question without notice.
Just to add to that request, when the state government told us that we had have no smoking at Tolosa Park, were they responsible or liable then for controlling that? I mean, I know they told us we were supposed to. It's your rule.
Through you, Mayor. Depends on who declared the no-smoking area, I think is the response. So without knowing the detail of that, the authority who's declaring the area no-smoking is ultimately responsible.
Same for sports grounds.
Yeah.
Given our responsibility, you know, through all our documents for a healthy, clean city, et cetera, et cetera, maybe we should lean on the state government to enforce in areas of, you know, like where they congregate outside restaurants. You're not allowed to smoke inside a restaurant, yet you can smoke outside a restaurant. And in Hobart, we were quite successful in stopping a lot of areas that had smoking. So Franklin Square was another one, but it's a matter of having the right signage, and also in parks, putting up no alcohol between certain hours, because, you know, this is not a very nice place at the front of our own council chambers. Most times of the day, in a beautiful rose garden, there's a lot of mischievous behaviour, but the smoking is a huge problem, and it's right next to a health facility, and at some stage, we have to address the culture, and I would like to see the no-smoking stickers on the ground and on the poles and all the rest of the stuff. I'm glad we've got butt bins, but it's kind of, you know, you have one or the other. You're either going to let them butt out, or you move them out from those street things, because it's not fair on any old person sitting there trying to catch a bus or wait for a taxi to be inhaling someone else's smoke.
So what, sorry, what was your question, Alderman? Did you have signage?
No, probably investigating other alternatives, which I gather you're working on with your Streetscape and thing there, but there must be a way around it. But even if you're not getting reimbursement for the expense of enforcing it, if you're changing the culture, that's got to be worth something.
Absolutely, we are.
And people dob on each other, you know. You're not allowed to smoke here.
Yeah, certainly working on a number of initiatives, and I know David's team's been not very concerned with Northgate around designated smoking areas outside of Northgate too, because a lot of employees come out and congregate around the door area there to smoke. So we're very aware of it. It is a very complex issue to not only regulate, but also enforce and monitor compliance with. And there are a whole range of complex reasons why people smoke as well. So we mustn't forget that smoking is an addiction, and it's very difficult to quit. Doesn't mean you have to litter your butts, obviously, but it's a very complex issue, and I think there's no support. And we have put signs on our council lawns recently, so would you like to?
Thank you, Mayor. I was looking for an opportunity to say that, Alderman. We've recently, as the mayor just outlined, half a dozen signage around possession or consumption of alcohol in the area outside council lawns, and that's enabled the change immediately to occur, and the police have been able to enforce that over the last two, three weeks, I think, Mayor, is the time. So that change has happened already, which is a really positive thing. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any further questions without notice?
Moving, going to closed council?
We've moved, we're going to closed council, moved Deputy Mayor King, someone to second, seconded Alderman Fraser. Please raise your hand, indicate if you're for. That's carried unanimously. Thank you to the members of the public who have joined us, Mr Steenburgen and Mrs Bryan. Thank you for joining us in chambers this evening. Thank you to those who have joined us via our live stream. We'll see you next time.